All right, good evening. I'd like to call the March 8, 2021 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Litchfield for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Please tie your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you and please stand. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, here.
Okay. Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield? Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I am here.
All right. Mayor Connolly, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, are there any recommended changes?
Mayor, I have no changes this evening.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
A mo-
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll call the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or were scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers tonight for public comment and I have got the public input mailbox pulled up and we have not received any comments for public comment either.
Thank you very much. We'll close the public comment period, move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda includes the following items. Item one is approval of minutes from the February 8, 2021 City Council workshop and the February 8, 2021 and February 11, 2021 City Council meetings. An ordinance, and item two is an ordinance enacting and adopting supplement number 2020 dash S-13 to the City of Greenville Code of Ordinances. Item number three is an ordinance amending the city code and dissolving the Community Appearance Commission.
Yeah. Mayor and council, Emmanuel McGirt, City Attorney, we have a clarification to that ordinance. The intent was to dissolve the entire Community Appearance Commission and it references just one of the sections, so it's kind of confusing. So we clarified the ordinance by indicating that the entire ordinance, all three sections involving the Community Appearance Commission are hereby dissolved. I think staff could share that if they want, if you want to see it.
Yeah. Kamala Devan sharing that, please.
So just, again, just striking section of reference, we're dissolving the entire article and referencing all the sections. So that's the amendment, the change, the clarification to the ordinance.
Okay.
Just, I guess, as far as, why don't we pull that item and then we can make a formal vote on amending that after we go through the rest of the consent agenda?
Okay.
Does that work?
Okay. Uh huh. Thank you, Valerie. Item number four is a resolution accepting dedication of rights. And easements for Davenport Farms and Emerald Park Phase 4 Cluster. Item number five is approval of the application for the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, a part of grant in support of Wildwood Park. Item number six is approval to purchase replacement network and security hardware. Item number seven is approval to lease four replacement sanitation side loaders for the Public Works Department. Item number eight is our contracts for H&amp;H Architecture and JKF Architecture for on-call architectural and engineering services. And item number nine are various tax refunds greater than $100. Mayor, that is the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. I believe that we will pull item number three at the request of the city attorney to make a change. Are there any other items anyone else would like to pull from the consent agenda?
There were no $25,000 tax rebates again, just moved to approve the agenda, the consent agenda as revised.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move to item number three. I guess I could probably ask Attorney McGirt to go ahead and make that presentation one more time.
Yeah. Again, again, the staff is asking council to approve the ordinance abolishing the Community Appearance Commission and accept the revision, striking the reference to just section and indicate that the entire article is being dissolved as shown in the ordinance that was placed on the screen earlier.
All right.
Moving to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Okay. Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
All right. Thank you very much. Move on to new business. Madam Manager, item number 10?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10 is a presentation by the Environmental Advisory Commission, and I believe that Dr. Shaw, who is the chair of the commission, is on the line along with Darrell Norris, who serves as the staff liaison. There's Darrell and there's Dr. Shaw. And I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Shaw, and to Darrell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, members of the staff. I'm proud to present the Environmental Advisory Commission report. And as you'll see from this slide, we have three vacancies on this commission. An attorney mailed in an application today and hopefully it will be acceptable. I've been in contact with Mr. Meyerhofer and we're actively recruiting the other two members. Hopefully, we can fill those positions in the near future. We'd like to thank the members on this slide for their assistance during the past year and especially Ms. Ann Wall, who's we've communicated with on several occasions.
Mr. Shaw, I don't think I see your slide.
You see?
No, sir. Your slide is not visible.
Let me go back and share screen. You see slides now?
No, sir. But you know what? The deputy clerk, Kamala Smith, has got those slides for you. She can help you with that.
There we go. Okay, Dr. Shaw.
Do you have them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Environmental Advisory Commission is quite passionate about the problem of climate change and it's pertinent since today is the start of extreme weather awareness a week. We all know that in 2020, there were extreme weather events, wildfires in the West related to heat, hurricanes and flooding. The EAC is also strongly supportive of North Carolina Governor Executive Order Number 80, which has the goal of drastically reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the state by 2025. And the reason why it's important that we do our part to reduce greenhouse gas emissions because these gases trap heat from the sun and are responsible for rise in temperature. There's evidence that in the year ending 2018, the 10-year period prior to that was the warmest in the history of North Carolina. The major sources of greenhouse gases are from fossil fuel burning and carbon dioxide is the main greenhouse gas emission. These greenhouse gases also come from transportation vehicles and generation of electric power. Many people wonder why the city of Greenville should be involved with a global problem such as climate change. And there's an organization called Cities for Climate Protection, and there's over 650 municipal governments in this organization. And they make the point that if all of these cities combine to do their part in reducing greenhouse gas emissions, a major mitigation of the climate change problem can occur. And lastly, the people of Greenville are very concerned about climate change. And this was really well written in a letter to the editor of the Daily Reflector last week by one of the citizens expressing concern over climate change. There are also organizations in the city of Greenville which are very much interested in this issue. This slide is given by scientists who document that climate change is related to human activity. And you'll see around 1880 to 1900 range, which was before significant generation of electricity and use of fossil fuels for vehicles. The carbon dioxide levels were relatively low in the world. The temperature was relatively low. But since 1900, with the use of fossil fuels for our vehicles and generation of electric power, carbon dioxide levels have dramatically risen and have accelerated in recent years. And along with that, global temperature has increased. In 2020, the East EAC presented to the city council our goal of establishing an office of sustainability and hiring a sustainability manager to do a greenhouse gas inventory. We subsequently met with Ms. Wall and wanted to find out how we could facilitate this action by city council. And she pointed out the problem of COVID-19 and its impact on the Greenville economy, especially with reduction in sales tax receipts, and pointed out that it was unlikely that the city council would initiate a new sustainability office. We asked her to show us what the city had been doing to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and reduce energy usage. And she and staff produced a very detailed matrix showing that the city has been converting traditional lights to LEDs, which are much more efficient. The city has been moving towards buying fuel efficiency vehicles and buildings are better insulated, especially the new transportation center. We had a presentation by Chad Carwin, who is the ECU Sustainability Manager. And he has done greenhouse gas emissions inventory for ECU for several years. And by making these measurements, has been able to pinpoint areas where greenhouse gas emissions can be reduced. We have a proposal, adopt a stream, which is similar to the Adopt a City Street. This proposal helped clean up streams in Greenville. We had a really interesting update on recycling from Mr. Demery and Mr. Coward. And we learned about problems of recycling in Greenville, and especially the fact that glass is no longer a recyclable material. The city has applied for a grant to pay for glass recycling, and hopefully that will come to fruition. There's a stormwater grant to improve environmental education. Our goal for 2021, the major goal, again, is to do a greenhouse gas emissions inventory so that we can determine what sectors of the city are producing greenhouse gases and then have the goal of reducing the greenhouse gas emissions. And to effect this, we are in the process of applying to the Duke School of Environment for a two semester client-centered master's project. And the School of Environment has the goal of educating their students that they gain practical experience in working on environmental problems with government and business entities. And if this project is approved, we will have three to five grad students come to Greenville and spend about nine months doing this inventory and producing a written report. We've met with the director of this program at Duke, and she was very positive about our proposal. She pointed out that a similar proposal was done by the students two years ago, and they produced a greenhouse gas inventory for the city of Durham. And the city of Durham is using this to reduce greenhouse gases. And we hope in 2021 to further educate the public about recycling stormwater drainage and the role that individuals can play in mitigating climate change. So we hope to come back to you in a year with some positive results on a greenhouse gas inventory. And then the city can hopefully work at reducing this and helping to mitigate climate change. We appreciate your attention to this and are thankful for all the help that we've received with this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shaw. We appreciate your time. Appreciate everything that you do with the EAC and all the work that you guys have been doing. I know the last year has not been the easiest and our meetings have been adjusted, but your continuous good work goes on. And we appreciate all that you guys do as a commission. Does anybody else have any other comments?
Yes, Mayor. This is Councilmember Meyerhofer. Dr. Shaw, I appreciate your service. I know we've exchanged one or two emails up to this point. I look into that nominee that you have. Valerie, can you send that name to me as soon as it's available, if you have it available already? Please.
Okay. Yep. I'll check in with Darrell and send it.
It'll probably receive in a couple of days in the mail.
Okay. It seems like we had a full EAC for just a couple of months and then people started falling off. So I've reached out to some people. Dr. Shaw, please don't be shy. I know you haven't up to this point, but let me know if you have any interested parties. And we'll try to get that board filled back up. But I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And Darrell, Darrell Norris, I appreciate your time too, buddy. Thank you.
Sure thing. Thank you.
Yeah, Darrell was very good.
Any other comments? All right. Thanks again, Dr. Shaw. We appreciate it. Madam Manager, item number 11?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Seven to the 2021 City of Greenville Budget Ordinance Number 2025, the Special Revenue Grant Fund, Ordinance Number 11003, and the Capital Projects Fund, Ordinance Number 17024. And Financial Services Director Byron Hayes has a brief presentation, Mayor.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council. This is Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Seven. Amendment Number Seven includes adjustments to the general fund, the Facilities Improvement Fund, Fire Rescue, Wrecking Parks and Capital, Public Works, Capital Projects Funds, and the Grant Special Revenue Fund. Breakdown of the amendments. We are transferring funds from the Fire Station 7 project to the Station 1 Bait Extension Project in the Fire Rescue Capital Projects Fund. That is a neutral budget impact to the fund of $4,500. We are appropriating occupancy tax reserves within the Public Works Capital Projects Fund and transferring it to the Facilities Improvement Projects Fund for additional convention center HVAC upgrades. It's an increase of both funds, $50,000. We are reclassifying general liability insurance budget based on year-to-date actual claims. That is a neutral impact to the general fund of $28,000. We are moving funds from the Police Department to the Special Revenue Fund for the remaining local match for the Shot Spotter Project. That, too, is a neutral impact to the general fund of just over $32,000. We are reclassifying contracted services from Public Works to Planning and Development for the Emerald Loop. That is also a net neutral impact to the general fund of $40,000. And lastly, we are recognizing funding received for the NCMG grant within the Wrecking Parks Capital Projects Fund and transferring that to the Grant Special Revenue Fund to complete current year grant requirements for that grant award. That's an increase of $24,000 for those funds. And as a result of these amendments, this brings the City of Greenville Operating Fund to $154.7 million. And staff recommends approval of the City of Greenville Operating Fund Ordinance, the Capital Projects Fund Ordinance, and the Grant Special Revenue Fund Ordinance. Any questions?
All right. Any questions for Mr. Hayes?
I have no questions on this specific issue, but I did have some financial questions. So maybe we could bring it, we could do it after the vote, just general information stuff.
You want to ask him right now? You can.
Yeah. I know there's been some federal action which might have some implications for budgets for municipalities. I was curious if there was any information we had about that. And I guess that was a specific one.
So Councilmember Smiley, I'll weigh in. And we also have my assistant city manager, Michael Cowan, on the phone. We are awaiting some information from our lobbyist as well as some official notification from the federal government. We do believe that the city will be in receipt of some stimulus money. So we're trying to very quickly understand the size of that stimulus as well as the possible uses for those funds.
Yeah. I'll just add to what City Manager Wall just stated is that we have got access to the language in the Senate bill and the allowable uses will have, are very vague at this point in time in many ways. So we'll be having to look at what the US Treasury provides as guidance and its allowable uses a little bit more in detail. So right now, we, you know, it's hard to say with any confidence what, which direction it's going until we have that further guidance after the sign of the bill.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Move to approve.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second. I'm Smiley's second all night.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll call the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the review of the March 11, 2021 meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. At the March 11 meeting, the council will consider appointments to boards and commissions.
Madam Clerk?
All right. First board is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Mayor Protem Glover, you have some appointments there.
Affordable housing?
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't know that.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll have something back Thursday night after talking with you guys.
Okay. Next would be Environmental Advisory Commission, Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Maybe I'll have a new one to make, if you can forward that on to me.
Yes.
Other than that, I will continue the others.
Okay. Firefighters Relief Fund Committee, Will Franklin is up and eligible, and any member of council can make a motion to reappoint him or appoint another member. And that's Thursday. The next board would be the Human Relations Council. Again, Mayor Protem Glover.
I'll have to get with the science.
Okay. Next would be the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Still continuing that one. Thank you.
Police Community Relations Committee, and that is for Councilmember Daniels.
I'd like to appoint Mr. Kevion Gaynor.
Okay. All right. And we can do that at the Thursday meeting, so, okay. And then Youth Council, Mayor Protem Glover.
I'll have something on that, I hope, on Monday night. I mean, the next meeting.
Okay. All right. And that concludes the appointments.
Thank you, Valerie. The city council will also consider at the March 11 meeting two public hearings. One is for an ordinance to annex Davenport Farms at Emerald Point Phase 5 involving 6.3832 acres located at the Terminus of Jade Lane. And item number three is an ordinance requiring the repair or the demolition and removal of the dwelling located at 300 Claremont Circle, Tax Parcel 16182. Mayor, that is the March 11 council meeting.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the city manager's report.
I have no report this evening, Mayor.
All right. We'll move on to comments from Mayor and the city council. We'll start with Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Couple of quick items. Welcome back, Ma Rose. We missed you.
Thank you. I missed you guys.
Congrats to Gary Fenton on his retirement and to Don Octagon on taking his place. And that's all I got for you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Litchfield?
Welcome back, Ma Rose.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Don.
No additional comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Smiley.
I have no comments.
Councilmember Bell.
This is Councilmember Bell. I'll echo a couple of other councilmembers. Welcome back, Rose, we missed you. And outside of that, I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels.
Yes, it is International Women's Day. And so I would just like to say thank you to all the strong, beautiful women in my life and who's crossed my path, and especially my mother, Darlene Crandall, because I don't want to be an orphan. And just thank you all. And also, it is Social Worker Appreciation Month. So our theme this year is social workers are essential. So when you see a social worker, thank a social worker. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Daniels. Mayor Protem Glover.
Oh, well, I like to say it's good to be back. I'm kind of taking days as they come. Thank God I made it through this meeting. I didn't know if I was going to be able to make it or not. But I really thank all of you for all the cars, the gifts, the flowers, and and all the things that you gave to my family and supporting us during the death of my son. And it's just gonna take a day at a time. That's the only way I can take it. So it's good to be back, good to see everybody's face. I missed you guys.
All right, I will echo most of everything everyone else has said. Ma Rose, it's great to have you back. We have missed you. You are an integral part of our family, an integral part of our city. And it hasn't been the same without you on the dice with us. So we're glad you're back. We'll continue to pray for you and your family. You're a very strong woman. And we know that you will, will take it day by day. And if there's anything that we can do to help you out, don't ever hesitate to reach out to any of us because we are a family and we appreciate everything that you do for us.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. And also, I want to say congratulations to Don Octagon on being the new Parks or the Wreck and Park Director, as well as Gary Fenton for your, I believe it's 14 years of service to our city, leading that department. We appreciate everything that you have done for our city. And we're looking forward to staying in touch with you. And don't go too far away because we still need your assistance. And I know Don will appreciate you helping him out and guiding him as he continues to take over the department. And finally, I want to say a big congratulations to the ECU baseball team. They continue to win. They look really good on the field. They got a nine and two record. They continue to move up in the rankings. And I think it's like a breath of fresh air for all of us here in the springtime to see some good baseball and some good accolades out of the ECU Athletic Department. So congratulations to the baseball team. We'll continue to cheer you on and Greenville is proud of you. With that, that's all I have. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion was made by Mayor Protem Glover, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. We'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
All right, thank you very much. Everybody have a great night. We'll see you on Thursday night at 6:00 P.M.